I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz is absent with prior notice. Mr. Merrington?
Here.
Mr. Parentana?
Present.
Coram is present.
Thank you. Please rise for your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, and matters related to litigation. The Nishamity mission statement is, "The Nishamity community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Mr. Jones, your report please.
First off, at our work session each month, we spotlight a school's art production, and so we'd like to congratulate the students at Miller Elementary School, their teacher, Stacy Potter, for providing the artwork that graces our walls here this month, and for Ms. Potter's inspiration of the creativity in her students. We look forward to continuing to display our student artwork, and actually, it goes up on our Facebook, our website as well, so that you can view video of all the presentations throughout the school year. We include enrollment numbers every work session as well. If you're interested in how many students are attending the schools and grade levels, you get to see that each month in our work session superintendent's report, so that's available for you. Congratulations to students at Buck and other schools that are involved in wax museum opportunities to practice their public speaking, but also, they're using the technology that's available now at the elementary school level to videotape themselves. It's a great practice, great opportunity to work with that technology skill. Our high school students who are here didn't have that technology available to them when they were at the elementary school. I don't know that they even know that right now, in kindergarten and first grade, iPads in every classroom, and second grade, third grade, fourth grade, one-to-one Chromebook technology, every classroom. You don't have that yet, I know. Middle school is where we start it with one-to-one, and we're phasing in, none of you in ninth grade, it doesn't matter, because we're phasing in ninth grade next year, and then gradually we'll have one-to-one across the district. But an activity like that, that wax museum that the schools are producing, is enhanced for sure with the technology that's available to our students today. We have a Super Kids program, a reading program, and it was fun. Cass, who is the character in Super Kids, comes in costume and visits. I met a little guy in Tewanka who saw me and said, "Mr. Jones, I saw Cass, she's 12." And the young lady has to be in her twenties, but she must have told him that she was 12 years old. But it really does help, bring excitement to the reading program. We thank our instructional coach, Colleen Stahl, for organizing and bringing that to each of the elementary schools. There's a STEAM club that meets at Pecession, thanks to Bucks County Audubon Society grant. A grant from them has allowed fifth-grade girls at Pecession Middle School to spend some afternoons exploring science, nature, and physics, and the hope is, is that we can expand that to the other middle schools in future years, in other grades. Maple Point does a Mother's Day Walk-a-thon. This year, they raised $4,300, and the high earners, the high-tally individuals, were invited to a special luncheon at the Capital Grill in Philadelphia. That's high-class stuff. And Corey Clement from the Eagles, as well as Michael Barkan, were present at that luncheon. So congratulations to the good work. We talk a lot here about the service that all of our elementary, middle schools, and high schools do in connection with community involvement. We appreciate that type of work. Maple Point was also recognized. There are no Place for Hate Club. It's an Anti-Defamation League, sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League, and involves 1,600 schools across the nation, and we've completed another successful year, and we're recognized for that work. Girls' STEM, more girls in STEM, this time 58 girls from the Sheminy Middle and High Schools participated in Girls' STEM Day at Delaware Valley University. It's for the sixth year, it happened just a few days ago. Women in various STEM-related professions, such as digital marketing, pharmacy, sports medicine, emergency medicine, veterinarians, et cetera, were on hand to talk to our students and others from the area. We had a high school student, we're going to hear more about some students today, we're spotlighting students, and we're excited about that, but we have one student here who was recognized, Ryan Mace, won a $2,000 scholarship through True Mark Financial Credit Union by placing third in a Jeopardy contest. It was a competition of high school students in Bucks and Montgomery Counties, a Jeopardy style event, testing the students' financial knowledge. Congratulations to Ryan, and we're going to hear more good work from our business, computer, and information technology department this evening. And then finally, two more things. I'd like to point out that we had our Military Commitment Ceremony. It's a really special event here at the high school, and actually, the select choir that's here with us performs at that event, and does a beautiful job with a patriotic song, and we get a chance to spotlight those graduates who plan to enter the military, have military service. We thank them for that commitment, and appreciate the work of Dr. McGee and Athletic Director Mags for the time that they put in to make sure that we acknowledge how important that decision is for all of us, and so again, we thank them. And then finally, the We Build Future Awards are also something that we talked about at this work session. It's last month, we were able to get out, it's really a great opportunity for me to spotlight people in the district who are doing good things to advance the mission of this district, to empower students to be productive citizens and lifelong learners. And so, we look for people who are doing special things along those lines, and so this last month, we were able to spotlight Nurse Carol Alexis out of the Tewanka Elementary School, kindergarten teacher at Miller, Jody Arnold, principal at Fertabar, Judy Brown, reading specialist, too, at Schweitzer, Monique DeAntremont, and Kim Maruzzi, Mission One instructional assistant right here at Maple Point, Pat O'Brien, music teacher at Fertabar, Ashley Patrick, and a brand-new, relatively-new hire, system support technician Jesse Tunis, who's really made a mark for himself with the work that he's doing for us, and people wanted to make sure that he got spotlighted. So that's a, it's been a good year-long activity for us to be able to just recognize some of the people. There's many more that we hope to get to in the future, and that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'd like to note on the board docs, this month, there's the report by Dr. Gloria Hancock, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. It's the semi annual report, if anyone wants to go on board docs and read it. Now I'll turn it back to Mr. Jones for some presentations.
This year, we've been able to spotlight at our work session, in our presentation portion, a lot of the new programs that we have across the district at all grade levels, and then there's been opportunity, too, for us to spotlight students, and surely, those have been spotlight events for us this year, when we have our students here either performing, as our middle school students did prior to the meeting, and today, you're going to see a few more of our students. And so, I'm going to turn this over first to Maple Point, and I have Anne Schmidt, one of our social studies teachers here in the school. I know Ms. Foley is here. Is Ms. Reed here? I'm sorry. Ms. Reed is here, I didn't see you. Hello. So we have three of our teachers escorting.
I'm standing.
There you go. And Ms. Schmidt's going to introduce two middle school students. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Anne Schmidt, I'm the social studies teacher here at Maple Point Middle School. I'm really proud to introduce two of my students to you tonight. They participated in a national writing competition earlier this year, and the theme of this was "America's Gift to My Generation." The students entered through the VFW Post 6393, and this was a Patriots' Pen essay contest. Lauren Fetzer was, won the eighth grade competition, second place, and Aaron Lewis, third place. So we're going to, we asked them if they'd be, if you'd be interested, they'd like to read their essays to you. They're very proud of the work that they did, and we certainly are proud of them as well.
What is the best gift you have ever been given? Maybe an Xbox, or the hottest new video game, or even a car. I'm sure these gifts would make you smile, but I think the greatest gift we could ever receive is our freedom and liberty. Let's face it, we can speak freely, go to school, communicate via social media, and do many other things that we value. I grew up in a fast-paced, frenzied world filled with instant messaging and intermediate responses. We have also seen more than our fair share of tragedy, like the shooting at Las Vegas, the Boston Marathon bombing, and countless others. Despite these terrible attacks on our country, we stand united together, hand in hand, helping others in times of need. During Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma, people all over the country donated food, money, and even a place to stay. Fundraisers and concerts were held to unite us. Our military proudly served and rescued many sacrificing their own personal safety. Citizens from Texas helped others, saving some with water rescues, sharing food and water, and donating money even though they were suffering. I love how we were able to say, "We are the same, no matter who we are." America is like no other, because we stand strong no matter what happens in our lives, which is a true gift. One of my favorite examples happened a long time ago. On August 28th, 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. shared his dream with all of us, the dream that all men are created equal. Everyone can eat at the same restaurants, go to the same schools, and sit at the front of the bus. This historic part of history has a far-reaching impact from then to now. My generation does not seek color, but rather friends. We embrace our differences and welcome others. I am thankful every day that I can explore my passions and become the best me I can be. The freedom we are afforded and the protections our strong military provides my generation with the amazing privileges we have today. Opening our hearts and minds, accepting others, is the best present we can ever give to others. So next time you get a gift, remember what you already have. We have the opportunity to live in America, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you.
America's Gift to My Generation. America was founded on the pillars of freedom, opportunity, and equality. These core principles are etched into our history and our lives today. We Americans take pride in our great country, and we are grateful for the gifts it has given us. My generation, in particular, has received its lion's share of gifts, the biggest being the opportunity to come from anywhere and become anything. No matter who you are or where you come from, you can become whatever you push yourself to be. If you aspire to be an entrepreneur, famous artist, or even the president, there's nothing holding you back. We have access to world-class public education, public libraries, and all the information in the world at our fingertips. In the USA, you can get a good-quality public education from K to 12 for free. Many kids from other countries don't have this opportunity. Our government has heavily invested in technology, which is vital in today's world. For instance, my school provides Chromebooks for all the students. By giving us these tools, we can become competitive in the global market. For me, this has been groundbreaking, because I've always had to share a computer with my siblings. Now I have the freedom to work for long periods of time uninterrupted. Generations of years past did not have the same level of opportunity as we do. It took years of debates and discussions for our country to reach a point where women and colored people could reach the upper strata of society. Tensions grew so high, at one point, our country almost split apart. Our country has gone through thick and thin, so that one of our dreams could come true. Men and women have given their lives protecting us, so we could have a shot at life. We should not waste this opportunity. In conclusion, thanks to the work done by previous Americans, our generation has opportunities unlike anyone before us. We must cherish this gift and not take it for granted. Be proud that you are American and use the gift to its full potential.
I want to thank both Lauren and Aaron. It's really important that we helped, and hopefully, we are helping you develop that voice, because that's a strong voice. It's wonderful to see you take the time to participate in such a democratic activity, to share your thoughts, and we really appreciate you coming out this evening. We have a couple certificates we'd like to give to each of you, if you could come back up, and we'd like your teachers to come up, and we're going to have a photo taken. Mr. Sullivan, our board president, is going to hand those certificates out. Congratulations, thank you so much, thank you so much.
I'd just like to comment how well-spoken at the podium as well, besides the content of their letters, very well-spoken.
They don't have no more homework, Joe. They have homework, but I'm going to let them go in just a minute. Our next group is a three-member team, Future Business Leaders of America, and I wasn't certain, Ms. Dougherty, are you, or who is going to help us here? Senator, you are the advisor for the FBLA, and I appreciate you being here this evening.
I'm advisor and my right-hand person here.
You're the department chairperson, Ms. Dougherty, thank you.
Hello, I'm Janice Asseny, and I'm the advisor of Nishamity's FBLA Club. I just wanted to give you a little background. Future Business Leaders of America is a national nonprofit educational association of student members preparing for careers in business, or who just simply are interested in learning more about the free enterprise system. FBLA helps students develop leadership abilities and prepare for entry into business or business-related occupations. Members learn how to engage in business enterprise, how to direct the affairs of a group, and how to compete honorably in competitions. These activities help prepare the students to be better employees and better citizens. This year, our club was led by very enthusiastic officers who wanted to do more. So the students sponsored a 5K walk-run at the high school in November. They sold t-shirts, raffled donated baskets, collected change totaling over $3,300, and this went to support our state project Alzheimer's Association. The donation earned Nishamity top honors at our state competition, placing us third out of 299 chapters, and seventh per capita. So we also earned the Gold Seal Chapter and the Outstanding Chapter awards because of these kids. Tonight, we're here to recognize three very exceptional members. Alyssa McErlin, Tom Mararchy, and Steve Muller, who competed at, who competed at the State Leadership Conference in April, and placed a remarkable first place in the entrepreneurship team event. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Janet Dougherty to elaborate on the event. Janet was a former FBLA advisor, and she's also the student's entrepreneurship teacher. She worked with Alyssa, Tom, and Stephen to help them prepare for the competition.
The entrepreneurship competitive event begins with a 100-question objective exam, and some of the topics range from type of ownership questions, such as dealing with sole proprietorships, partnerships, C corporations, S corporations, LLCs, and then it would move on to business plan topics, marketing terminology, financial reporting, funding, intellectual property, and much more. By scoring in the top 10, teams then advance to the next level of competition. And here, Tom, Alyssa, and Stephen were sequestered until given a case study startup scenario, where they had to evaluate and create a response within 20 minutes. Their response then had to be delivered to a panel of judges orally, in an oral presentation that was concise, and then it needed to be shared among the three within seven minutes. They also needed to field questions from the panel of judges to defend their position, and do this all in front of an audience of about 50 individuals. So the team was evaluated on their, in understanding of the case, identifying alternatives, implementing a solution, and then they also needed to demonstrate their competency from the knowledge of, the exam competencies in their response, and their delivery skills were evaluated on their self-confidence, their poise, and their ability to effectively answer questions. There were 33 entrepreneurship teams representing the best in FBLA chapters across the state, and congratulations to you for your achievement of placing first, and they will be representing Nishamity High School and the state of Pennsylvania in the National FBLA Competition in Baltimore to be held at the end of this month. So congratulations.
Are any of them going to speak? I don't want to put your... I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you 20 minutes, and you can come back. Is this Stephen?
Yeah.
All right, Stephen, go ahead.
So we were sequestered for about three hours, and then we got the case. It was a franchise business. We were trying to get funding from our parents to start up either a franchise of a 24-hour gym, or we had to present the reasons why it would be beneficial for a franchise versus just starting up our own business.
I have to say, I met with the three of you, and it was brief encounters beforehand, but good eye contact, really confident in your speech, it's obviously a testament to some of the programming that you've received and the coursework that you've had in the business department. This is really exciting to see, because business is one of the big majors on the college campus, and so to do this kind of work here gives you a nice head start, if that's an area that you're looking to pursue. We congratulate each of you, we have certificates for you, stay right there, thank you.
Start your own business.
I can't.
Don't franchise.
So we're going to start and finish the meeting, or at least this portion of the meeting, with music. We had our middle school entertainment as we came in, and now, you're going to have a chance to hear from some of the members from our select choir. It'll be surprising if you haven't seen them yet this year, because they've been everywhere, but just in case, this puts them in one more public spot and on television again, again on television. And so I'm going to have you come up, and I think you have a number to perform, and some of us may move around to watch from the other side. Thank you so much. Oh, I forgot, I forgot that Connor Watson is first going to provide you a little insight, and then the group is going to say.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Connor Watson, and I'm the vice president of choir at Nishamity High School for the 2017-18 school year. As I stated in an open letter to our select choir just last week, "There are not enough words in the dictionary to explain how I feel," and that certainly applies to our music program as a whole. I am proud to be a part of such an amazing program filled with so many of my talented, hard-working peers. The hard work and dedication of our program as a whole is miraculous, and it's very evident in everything we do. If you hadn't heard, which would be surprising, we, in December, we were the winners of the 101.1 Moore FM Christmas Choir Competition, and we got to perform with the Philly Pops onstage. And then also in April, some of us went on our choir trip through cruise festivals, it was a cruise in the Bahamas, where we get adjudicated, where our concert choir as a whole received a superior rating of 96.5 out of 100, and our select choir received a superior rating of 98.5 out of 100. This program has done for me what it has done for countless other students. It has given me a sense of belonging. Further, and perhaps more importantly, through this program, I've made and strengthened countless friendships, of which I'm certain are going to last a lifetime and beyond. We truly are a family, a family that supports one another, cares for one another, and a family that is always there for one another. I'd like to thank Mrs. Nichols, the school board, and other music teachers throughout the district, and most importantly, the Nishamity community, for their unwavering support. Without the support that we receive, and without the urging that we receive from our community, we certainly wouldn't be as happy and successful as we are. Thank you very much.
Ms. Nichols is hiding in the audience as well, thank you, Ms. Nichols, for being here.
He's a big boy, bad boy, Leroy, don't care where you get him from.
Bring that big bad Leroy back. Want him back.
Want him back? Dum.
So I just want to say, and you know, one of the nice things about when we bring students out here, the board members get to see, not just you do this performance, but they also start to make some connections. And for instance, someone here said that they have a computer now, and that one-to-one laptop initiative allows him to be able to work uninterrupted, right? His sister can't bother him anymore, and that's... And so that's not something that we necessarily think about, right? When we're making that decision, some of these are the extra bonuses that are associated with making some good decisions on the educational front. But this program here, when you talk about co-curricular activities, extracurricular activities, when we're talking about a mission statement that says that you're looking to empower students to be productive citizens and lifelong learners, the businesses today say they want people with four Cs. They say critical thinkers, communication, collaboration, and creativity. And so certainly, certainly in this brief encounter here with this group, you can see creativity, you can see collaboration, and you can see the communication. We had an art person stand at this podium a little while back and say that the art gave her her voice. Art here at Neshamene gave her the voice. Connor, some of your comments sort of kind of that sense of belonging and the concept of voice. So I want to thank you. It's really important for us to see you in action and to make these connections to the good work that's happening. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Thank you so much. And this is, even though one of the board members thought you don't have any homework, this is a great time for you to get out and get that homework done with the schools still in session, full days still, we're not into the early dismissal. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay.
Joe, I have to ask, what are the names on the back of the shirts?
A bunch of us started doing this thing. Her friends had, she started putting U's in place of the vowels in all of our names. So like, she's Hannah. My name's Hannah. I'm Adriana, but it says... She's Maddie, but it says Muddy. We don't have letters.
Some are last names. Hersht, Drapkin. Some are just weird. Dad is our backbone. We actually do call him Dad.
Thank you very much.
Well, the next time will be, you know, without you.
They totally wiped out the bright side.
Bless us.
Okay, that brings us to the first public comment section. Mrs. Burns?
No public comment.
Okay. We have one action item tonight. I'd like to make a motion where as the Neshamene Board of School Directors at the May 22, 2018 Public Board Meeting denied the application for Mast and the Neshamene Charter Board pursuant to Section 1717A of the Charter School Law, and whereas the Mast and the Neshamene Charter School application did not satisfy all the following four statutory criteria: one, the demonstrated sustainable support for the charter school plan by teachers, parents, other community members, and students; two, the capability of the applicant in terms of support and planning to provide comprehensive learning experiences to students pursuant to the adopted charter; three, the extent to which the application considers the information required by Section 1719A of the Charter School Law and conforms to the legislative purposes of the Act; and four, the extent to which the charter school may serve as a model for other public schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamene School, the Neshamene Board of School Directors hereby approves the findings of fact and conclusions of law denying the application as prepared by the solicitor, and authorizes the solicitor to serve the same on the applicant, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and the Penns, and the Pennsylvania Charter School Board, Appeal, Pennsylvania Charter School Appeal Board. Can I get a second? Second. You need a roll call?
You do need a roll call, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, you do need a roll call. Yes. Yea is to approve the motion.
Denial.
Denial. And no is to not approve the denial.
Mr. Allen?
Vote yea.
Ms. Bowman? Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Marerton?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Okay. The following are items for approval at the public meeting on June 19. Aramark Contract for Food Services Management 2018, 2019, approval of amended agreement with STA of Pennsylvania, Inc., budget transfers, overnight trips, acceptance of donation, first reading of Board Policy Series 9000, Cobra and retiree insurance billing services, stop loss policy, budgetary adjustments for federal and other programs, year-end budget transfers, fund balance removal for Peasars, fund balance commitment for Peasars, the 2018 home state and farm state exclusion, 2018-19 final operating budget. Committee reports. Ms. Hollenbeck? Any questions on any of the items to be approved? Yeah.
For business operations, our next meeting is next Monday, June 11, right here in this room at 6:30. We will be adopting, hopefully, the committee, out of committee, the final budget that we will be voting on on the 19th. Aramark will also be here to discuss food services as well. Thank you.
Question regarding Aramark. I know there was a statement made that they were going to make a presentation at our committee meeting, business operations, if I'm not mistaken, but it was going to exclude actual numbers.
It's not going to be about the budget and where we fell because the school year's not over. It's just how the program's going. Have we had increases, decreases, where we can improve or just get better as far as the specific food and things of that nature? The actual meeting about the numbers will be in September, October, after the school year is closed.
Thank you.
Educational development, Ms. Boyle?
The committee is in recess until the fall and will be announced, you know, on the website.
Thank you. Facilities and planning? We had our first kickoff meeting a couple weeks ago, and really what came out of that is that we've tasked our facilities director, Mr. Traska, to update some software programs to be able to give us current reports, talk about preventive maintenance programs, and start to develop a long-range plan, long-range facilities plan. Policy, Ms. Boyle?
The policy committee is going to be, the next meeting will be in October.
IU Board, Ms. Boyle?
And the next IU meeting will be June 19 in Doylestown at 7:00.
Neshamene Education Foundation, Mr. Feather?
The alumni committee met at Neshamene High School on May 24. A central website has been created to centralize Neshamene alumni resources. The web address is www.neshamenealumni.org. This site will contain links to new resources, including social media, directories, project updates, class and reunion information, and more. Over the summer, the committee is planning to pursue an alumni social gathering in the fall, beginning work on the creation of an Alumni Hall of Fame, and spread the word about these efforts, starting with our graduating seniors this year. The May Bertucci's Dining for Dollars event raised over $1,000. The two spring basket raffles raised over $900 for the foundation, thanks to all those who contributed to these great fundraisers. Congratulations to three Neshamene High School seniors who each received a $1,000 NEF scholarship, including Joseph Stanford, who will be attending Youngstown State University, Morgan Walter, who will be attending Bloomsburg University of Pennsylvania, and Anastasia Kaufman, who will be attending Kutztown University. The next Neshamene Education Foundation meeting will be held on Monday, June 11 at 4:00 p.m. at the district office in Maple Point Middle School. All are welcome to attend and contribute. So thank you to Mr. Stanley for providing this information.
Thank you. PSBA liaison, Mr. Parentano?
As mentioned, the last report, the state budget process is ongoing. PSBA feels that the chances are good that they're going to finalize it on time, but of course, I wouldn't bet money on that. Education funding appears to at least be stable, increased in a couple areas, but of course, nothing is final until it's voted on. Do not expect any large increase. We'll be lucky to hold on to, you know, what we have. As far as legislatively, you know, the ESA program was passed out of the Senate, I believe that was two weeks ago, under consideration for the, for the full Senate to adopt. That program would allow funds to be taken from the allotment to public education to go to vouchers for residents of school districts that I believe are in the low 15% of the, of the districts, they'll be able to apply for vouchers. The PSBA has a position that they're against this bill. I personally, you know, support that. I think both, you know, board members do, even though some I know have different issues when it comes to vouchers. It doesn't solve the problem. Alls it does is shift the money around, and it doesn't solve the problem. And while I know parents that may have their children in districts that are struggling, you know, may need other options, it will impact all the 500 districts, not just the lowing 15%. So, you know, like I said, that's going to be up for the full Senate to adopt, and I assume it would have to go back to the House, and the governor has indicated that if it reaches his desk, that he will veto it at that time. Other than that, there is much debate around charter school law. I know we just had a motion on the table tonight about charter school, but there's still much legislation going on. The PSBA is actively supporting legislation to be added to the school board law that would equalize the discrepancy in special education. Districts themselves are held at a great disadvantage. We generally have to supply a one, one payment size to the charter school that may be receiving a student that needs special ed, and if they don't spend all the money that was allotted, they get to keep it, you know? Where in our instance, you know, it generally doesn't allow us to do that. So there was lots of discrepancies in the law between what charters are allowed to do, what we are allowed to do, which, you know, puts the, you know, the sending district, which would be, you know, the recognized school district, at a disadvantage. Again, there, you know, constantly issues about the charter school law, and it's something I don't, you know, foresee being solved anytime soon, and we just have to deal with what the state legislator, you know, puts in front of us. But hopefully, they can make progress on the special education. And I know I've spoken about it before, I've had Mr. Devlin come to the podium and speak about the discrepancies in special education funding, the difference between charters, and it really is disparaging to the homeschool district. Other than that, there's not much of real importance, the budget being the big issue. I hope we end up in a really good place. So thank you.
Had a very busy meeting at the last Bucks County Tech School meeting. We met on May 29. I'll pull out the most important issues as I saw them. First off the bat, we agreed to the Articles of Agreement. It was announced that all districts unanimously passed, entered into the agreement with Tech School, and I am thankful to this board for the work, the support they gave us to push that through. I think the Tech School is an invaluable asset, and I am glad that we're still a member of it. The budget was also approved, also unanimously. I want to thank the, Ms. Bowman, I know worked quite hard on that committee. Thank her for that. I'll throw this out. The graduation date will be June 18 at the Cure Insurance Arena over in Trenton, New Jersey at 6:30 p.m. Congratulations to all the graduates coming out of the Tech School, especially our Neshamene graduates. A quick mention here of a concern that was brought up by Mr. Parentano, myself, Mr. Jones, concerning the admission process. That is an ongoing, but it is in discussion, and so I'll comment on it this time, but it is being considered, make some changes there. And last, I'm happy to say that we, there was a, honored the medal winners of the Skills USA contest, and a member of, we had one Girl Scout with her gold award and one Boy Scout with the Eagle Scout Award. And I was just thrilled to see all the students come up, and we were able to question each one of them as went around the room. It was quite impressive what kids are doing today. And, you know, I was able to ask the Eagle Scout a couple questions, and Girl Scouts, and of course, I'm partial to them and the work they do, but they earned their awards. But, and I believe that's, yep, that's all I have, my five items. It's all in my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone want to suggest future topics? Brings us to board comment.
I'm going to ask a little indulgence from the board. This might be a little long. As you know, I gave notice tonight that I will not be able to attend the June 19 board meeting. So I know that meeting, we will be hopefully adopting and passing the final budget, which will be discussed at the business meeting on the 11th. I just want to state for the record that while I believe there are some areas of opportunity that we missed to take advantage of this year, I am in support of this budget and the proposed tax increase that's in the budget. I want to just, you know, caution our board members that while I do believe it's appropriate to meet the needs of our students, and accept the fact that at this time, another tax increase is warranted and justified, moving forward, I believe we need to take a much stronger look at a way to manage our payroll. Payroll is 72% of everything that we do. We cannot get to a balanced budget out of the 28% that's left. While we're actively using our reserves to manage and lessen the impact on our taxpayers, there will become a time in the future where, you know, we will not have any reserves. After this year, we'll have $8 million left in the reserve fund for Peasars. At the rate, there'll be about four more years that we can use that. We might be able to do something more creative to extend that fund or possibly add to it. I believe overall, the administration did a very good job. They got us in a much better place this year than we were last year. When you factor in the reserve usage for Peasars and the subsequent tax increase, we're down to, I believe it's only a few hundred thousand dollars over. So that's a great difference from where we were in the previous year, and I just want everybody at the administration level to know that I appreciate the, you know, the hard work and effort that was put into it. But when you put those two things together, we're still at about a $4.3 million gap. That will be closed with the tax increase. In the next three to four years, you're going to see, in my opinion, somewhere between a minimum of a million and a half to 2 million more in our Peasars obligation as the state continues to raise the rates. So we have to attack payroll either through our contract negotiations or through our way we operate and allot payroll. So that's the...
So that's the only area that I foresee as an opportunity to get, to get closer to an actual balanced budget. But if I was here on the 19th, even though I know things can change on the 11th, I would support the budget as currently proposed. Otherwise, I want to thank our, I don't know if they were able to get on TV or not, but our Maple Point cello orchestra, the two boys that are eighth graders that performed in the back before the meeting, it was great. I would hope they got on a little bit of TV, but if it didn't, they missed something. Our Patriot SA winners were great at the podium. The FBLA winners, what a fantastic idea, and the depth and scope of what they were asked to do to score was just, you know, amazing. And then at the end, the select choir, was that beautiful? I mean, that was, that was, that was outstanding. I mean, no wonder they, they were recipients of so many awards across the, the area last month. I also, of course, will not be a graduation, unfortunately. I want to make sure we graduate our Neshamoney class of 2018. Great job and great going on to the future. One thing I missed about the ESA announcement I made during the PSBA information, that was passed out of the Senate Education Committee, which our Tommy Tomlinson is a member of, and Tommy Tomlinson broke with his caucus and voted against that. You know, most people, I don't know if you know Tommy, he was a 12-year school board member before he moved into the legislature. He understands the issues and the problems, and, and I want to make sure Senator Tomlinson gets the recognition he deserves for keep standing up for, for school districts and public education. Lastly, I'm going to take a little personal moment here. This May 24th, I was able to participate in the high school award ceremony over at Neshamoney High. While I wasn't able to be there for the entire program, over 70 scholarship awards were giving out that evening, besides various other awards to our Neshamoney students. This was the inaugural year of Stevie's Fund participating with Neshamoney, in memory of our son. And we were able, through the generosity of the Neshamoney community as a whole, to give out three scholarships, three $500 scholarships this year. We originally intended only to give out one, but people were so generous, we felt that we should, you know, give out as, as much as we, we could, and, and also to see if we can do it in the future. So we gave out one award through our local sports organization, the Lower Southampton Athletic Association, and that was awarded to Miss Jessica Weber, who's pursuing a career in nursing. And we were able to give out two through the Neshamoney High School, and this was solely for students that were pursuing engineering in the future. And that was also won by two women. One was Miss Jill Whible, and the other one was Miss Samantha Custers. We were able to meet them both after the award ceremony. Great kids, bright-eyed, ready to go out there and, and take on the world, and, and real testament to our community and, and parents that raised them. So I wish them luck in the future and carry forth with them. And again, I want to thank from the bottom of my heart, and extend to with my family, the appreciation for the support that we received from the community and give us the opportunity to give back and memorialize Stevie going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got some, continuing on the awards program here. Memorial Day weekend out in Shippensburg, Neshamoney sent four young women and four young men out to the state championships in track and field. The young women, Shelby Kishel in the javelin, Kelly Wadlington in the long jump, Amira Green in the high jump, and Kaylee McCullough in the two-mile run. On the boys' side, Hunter Barnett, represented Neshamoney in the javelin, Logan Williamson in the triple jump, Savion Hebron in both 100 and 200. And Savion brought back medals in both events. He was seventh in the 100 in the state and second in the 200. Fast young guy, he's a junior, he'll, he'll be back next year. And Rusty Kudjic won the two-mile run, and Rusty, that completes an extremely rare trifecta for Rusty Kudjic. It's, it's very, very rare to have one young man win the cross-country state title in the fall, the indoor track two-mile run in February, and come back again and win in May to win the state championship in the two-mile. It's very, very rarely done.